Thank you. Mike Dunn?
Mr. President, members of the council, mayor, good to see everyone. My name is Mike Dunn. I'm the president and CEO of the Greater Salisbury Committee. In 1980, in 2001, in 2012, and in 2016, five different mayors, one interim mayor, and countless members of city councils all supported studies that looked at making our downtown work again. It should be noted that hundreds of citizens were asked to be part of these studies asked by former mayors. And even though these study groups were 44 years apart, they all concluded the same thing: We need people living downtown. We need heads in beds. From the study in 1980, during the past 15 years, there have been several attempts to counter patterns of decline in Salisbury's downtown. There is a shortage of adequate housing downtown. That was in 1980. Members of the council, it's time to act for the good of Salisbury. What's going on in downtown is wonderful. It's amazing that Title Health wants to build what it wants to build, that the Central Business District is not just a central business anymore. It's a burgeoning neighborhood, and people want to invest in that neighborhood and invest in your city. So I do want to bring forward a bit of a recommendation, a solution, sort of. Parking, 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 not density. We know that Salisbury University, the developer community, and the city of Salisbury need to have a parking study done. Why not have all three entities get the inputs from all parties and have not one but two new parking studies prepared? That's a way forward where everyone can look objectively at the parking data and make their conclusion. So if parking is the issue, then let's get input into the parking from the three major parties involved, and let us bring facts on parking to the table. Thank you all for your time, and we are in support, as the Greater Salisbury Committee, of this resolution to increase density. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Taylor?
Good evening, Robert Taylor, Salisbury resident. Start on a happy note. The audit and the financial statements, I see, were up. I think it's about a million and a half in unassigned fund balance in the general fund. I think you all put $1 million into the general fund about a month ago, which wouldn't be reflected in the financial study from June 30. So that's 2.5 million. Maybe that means no tax increase next year. I certainly hope, because it sounds like we've got a cushion if we need it. Also, it sounds like there might be enough in sewer and water, so there won't be a rate increase there. So happy note. Not so happy on what you want to do with downtown density. When I say "you," I mean I know certain council members' views on this. I think Mr. Dunn's suggestion is good. I don't agree with him that we should change the density, but I certainly agree that it makes sense to have a professional traffic study done before you do anything of this kind. It also makes sense to roll this into the comprehensive plan review, which we're in now. We're over the 10-year limit. To do this kind of a major change just piecemeal when we're right into the nuts and bolts of that doesn't make sense. It should all be done in one batch. So there's a couple reasons why nothing should be done right now. Now, looking at the problems, if we go to, and let's face it, the only reason we're here is because the developer got shot down in court and by the Board of Appeals and now wants to, as somebody said, do an end run, get things changed. That's really what this is about. Now, yes, it would affect the entire CBD. My calculation, just looking at the empty property in the CBD, it would add upwards of 500 parking spaces, just a rough calculation demand. So we're not talking about just Salisbury Town Center apartments. We're talking about the whole thing. But the reason we're doing it is because they want to get around the problem we have with the zoning. Now, Mr. Dunn mentioned a lot of studies over the past few years, decades maybe. None of those studies recommended anything close to 80 units per acre with no on-site parking. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended, and a former council and mayor did away with any requirement for on-site parking in the CBD. That was in 2018. None of those studies contemplated that. So essentially, they're meaningless as far as this particular matter is concerned. What really is important is what we're going to have with the parking problem, and that's why we need the study. I can tell you, I worked here for 40 years downtown. I know this person said he's lived here for a short time. I was here almost every day for 40 years until about eight years ago, and there is just no question in my mind that if these properties are developed, we sold all our parking lots, we're going to have one hell of a mess. Thank you.
Holly Worthington?
Holly Worthington, resident of the city of Salisbury. Page 26 of the envisioned Salisbury Plan stated Salisbury Town Center, quote-unquote, "This transformative major infill project will occur on City Parking Lots 1 and 11. It will be a public-private partnership, including approximately 200 market-rate apartments, 240,000 square feet of retail, an entrepreneurial center, a park, a hotel, a library, and a parking garage." That was part of the envisioned Salisbury Plan, page 26. Page 15 of the envisioned Salisbury Plan, if you look at the aerial map, Lot 15 was slated as surface parking, not for development. I wrote an offer on Lot 15 to purchase it to remain surface parking for myself and the opportunity shop.
Ms. Worthington, I want to pause. I want to make sure we're talking about the actual proposed density.
Yes, that is one of the lots that is slated for development. Lot 15.
I want to make sure we're pertaining to the actual density increase in the Central Business District.
Right, so this density increase will overflow onto Lot 15 because the project, when they did the, you're taking away from my time, but when they did the Unity Square parking lot, it took away from where the developer was going to be, so they threw Lot 15, so they didn't have to scale down their project, so it does pertain to density. Now, I made an offer to purchase Lot 15 so that it could remain surface parking. I said, Dear Major Heath and City Councilmembers, this will restate my interest mentioned at the council's meeting on June 12, purchasing the property, which is located in the northeast corner of Camden Avenue and Market Street, is designated as parcel 1066, tax map 107. According to the tax records, it contains 19,733 square feet, .453 acres, and is assessed at $200,100, of which $198,300 for land, $2,800 for minimal improvements. As specified in the contract attached, I am prepared to pay $55,000 or such greater amount equal to $1,000 more than any good faith and binding offer that the city will receive up to $75,000. This lot was purchased for $50,000. Subject to the standard terms and conditions, if the city required any special condition, it would have to be reviewed and acceptable to me. My interest in Lot 15 arises from ownership and occupancy of the synagogue building that addresses, the address is listed above, which is 300 West Main, a short distance from Lot 15, which provides convenient parking for my real estate brokerage in that building, including my associates, clients, the tenants residing in the upper floors, as well as many other occupants of properties on or nearby the westerly part of the downtown plaza. When I purchased my building in 2021 for $410,000, I was assured that parking on Lot 15 would remain available, and that was a major factor in my decision in purchasing my building. Until very recently, I did not realize the city intended to sell Lot 15 to a developer as part of a development project and terminated the available parking in that lot. I was never provided information on this project until about a month ago via a letter that went out dated May 15, 2023, from Brian Soper, City Planner. Additionally, as far as I'm aware, it was not pulled into the multiple listing service locally. It was put into an out-of-area brokerage. When I found this online, accepting offers is when I made my offer. It was not reviewed by City Council, although they received it. I had everybody sign off, and the mayor's office that it was received, my offer was never reviewed. It was a public parcel for sale, and it was not reviewed. My desire is that Lot 15 should have been maintained as parking for the convenience and benefits of the nearby businesses and residential occupants and their clients and visitors. This will become much more important if the ground-level spaces on Lot 1 are eliminated by development, even if a parking garage is built on that property or nearby. In my recent review of information provided by the mayor's office, I saw that Lot 15 was declared a surplus. However, since purchasing my lot, it has been fully utilized. Thank you.
Daniel Moreno-Holt? If you want to hold that, if you want to give that to the other clerk?
My name is Daniel Moreno-Holt. I'm a citizen of Lot 3. I'm also on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm here as a Salisbury citizen, local business owner, and urban design professional to share my thoughts regarding the proposed amendment to increase density in the downtown district. It's now well-understood that a thriving downtown needs people living in it. Past zoning practices that limited downtown to commercial uses were a significant factor in the stagnation of urban centers over the last 50 years. Towns and cities throughout the country are using their zoning code to reverse this trend. Research I did to inform my decision regarding the tax amendment corroborates this. The document that I provided shows the zoning laws from similar municipalities throughout Maryland and the Delmarva Peninsula. You'll see that many towns smaller than Salisbury allow for even more density in their urban cores than we do. Furthermore, many of them do not regulate density in terms of units per acre, or if they do, they allow very high densities relative to the size of the municipality. Instead, they use other rules like height limits or story limits to control density. In a time where downtowns throughout the country are trying to bring residents back, it doesn't make sense to further limit development by units per acre when other methods to control density are in place. At the recent Planning Commission meeting, downtown property owners spoke to this issue. Some own buildings that are currently used for commercial purposes, but if converted to residential, would not comply with zoning laws. The current regulations allow 75-foot-tall office building to be built by right, but a similar residential building would be significantly out of conformance with the units-per-acre requirements. This makes no sense. We know that residences downtown are critical to its success. Vacant downtown residential units are nearly nonexistent while commercial space sits empty. Allowing increased residential density in downtown is not only critical to improving the urban fabric, it's the right business decision that will increase property values and spur redevelopment and improvement of existing properties. In regards to parking, I agree this is an issue that needs to be addressed in the zoning code, but we shouldn't allow one problem with the zoning code to prevent us from fixing another. I hope that you will consider these facts in your decision-making. Supporting the tax amendment will help the heart of Delmarva build the thriving downtown that its businesses and residents deserve.
Thank you. Edwin Linderkamp?
Hi, my name is Edwin Linderkamp. I myself, I work at the University of Maryland Eastern Shore, and I'm on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee of the city of Salisbury. I myself, I grew up in two cities, two different countries. I grew up in Heidelberg, Germany, and I grew up in Santa Cruz, California. Heidelberg is a high-density city, and Santa Cruz is possibly like medium-density, but the city wants to increase its density due to especially affordable housing. Growing up in these cities, something I find very interesting that's being said here by the people who do not want or who are very critical about there being more and more parking is what are the benefits of parking? Because parking means more cars. So what is the benefit of more cars taking over the city? Honestly, Heidelberg is one of the most liveliest cities that I've seen. It has a very lively downtown, lots of city life. And so, I, this is my train of thought, but essentially, I don't see, I'm very much for the density as long as it's not maybe 20 other, the Ross buildings. So maybe not like nine-story-high buildings, but I do think density is very important. I think it's important for city life as long as it's done right, to especially increase the density. And something I really want to get at is it's good for local economy too, as long as it's done right. So I have something to read from a former urban planner and a placemaker named David Engwist. So the key to revitalizing a main street or town center is educating your retailers. Not more parking, a new toilet block, a street upgrade, a mural, or big event. What attracts people to a shopping street and spending lots of money there is not the amount of parking or the quality of the paving, it's the experience they have while in the space. Some of the most vibrant shopping streets in the world have constrained parking, narrow footpaths, sidewalks, and nondescript paving. So what is attracting the crowds? Collectively, the businesses are offering an exceptional, memorable visitor experience. In other words, more parking garages or parking in downtown, parking stripes, whatever they're called, and more cars in downtown, I don't think that that's going to increase a bunch of great experiences for people to visit and to visit businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Donalds?
I think this is the gentleman's last notes? Nope, someone's? Okay. I promise I won't read those. Let me see. Have you all turned the TV on lately? Have you all watched? And some of these developers are pretty much some of the developers that went to Lewis, Rehoboth, Dover, downtown Dover, Easton, Berlin, Ocean City. What do we all have in common? Turn the television on and watch the news. Parking, businesses closing down, no people, parking. It's nights that go by that I'm just in the kitchen, just having the TV on, and here comes the news, parking. Berlin's facing parking issues with their employees and having to negotiate with a church to park for their employees. Easton, Cambridge, Rehoboth, I think Lewis was on the other night, businesses, I don't know, something called those bike lanes taking up the parking spaces. Everything and every time I turn the news on, and I typically don't watch the news, but typically I've been watching it, and all of those common cities, or all of those towns and cities have everything in common. The developers went in, developed, and some of the developers that developed are here this evening. So City Council, please don't make it hard for me when I run for City Council, to have to correct what is happening now for the future. Yeah, I said it. Please don't have me have to go back and correct when we have it right now to make it right. Don't add more density, parking. Ms. Councilwoman Sharon DeShill, I echo everything you said. Parking, businesses, city streets, housing, stocking, CBD, Central Business District. Five months I was down there. Day, every single morning, I prayed that I was behind a UPS truck or a service truck coming up the plaza, because I knew that I could see around that truck, that I had to wait five minutes. If a car pulled out, I was getting that spot, because I was the next person in line. Today, I went to the library, couldn't find parking close enough without having to put a rain umbrella up to walk to get to the library. Just imagine your employees. Please, City Council, put a pause on this. Think about it. Really think about it.
Thank you, Ms. Donalds. Tony, is it Cooper Smith?
Good evening, Council. My name is Tony Cooper Smith. I'm at 100 Northwest Street, Easton, Maryland, and I'm here on behalf of the Salisbury Town Center Apartments. They own the four lots downtown. That's the specific project that some people have been referring to, but I want to focus on the tax amendment itself. That's why we're here tonight. So I made some notes as other people were talking. I want to go through some of the points that I think are relevant for you all. First, the Planning Commission recommendation. You have a Planning Commission that you all have appointed. Their job is to study these kinds of issues and to make recommendations to you all. They've done that here, and I think it was a six-to-one vote in favor of this proposal to increase the density. So that recommendation deserves due consideration. The second point is that in your ordinance right now, you already have effectively 70 units per acre. You have the 40 units of inherent density, and then you have 30 units per acre on top of that. That can be approved by special exception. So the idea that we're just doubling density outright is not correct. We already have effectively 70 units per acre that are available in the zoning ordinance. The third point is, is that there are a lot of different comments on all sides of this, but one thing that I don't think anybody questions is that for a long period of time, there have been planning efforts underway to increase residential in the downtown area. This is a concrete proposal that relates to that, that is a next step to help implement that longstanding policy. Finally, tonight, as I understand it, you all have this ordinance on for first reader for introduction. So I would urge you all to introduce this resolution, or this ordinance, allow this process to continue to play out, and that will allow the conversation to continue with a public hearing that you all will have after you introduce it. So I'd urge you all to introduce this piece of legislation tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Randy Day?
Good evening. My name is Randy Day. It's nice to see some familiar, smiling faces. I speak to you tonight not as, not on behalf of Purdue. I'm the retired CEO of Purdue Farms. I speak to you on behalf of myself as a citizen of this community and someone with a long-term vested interest in our success as a community. One of the challenges that institutions like Purdue, like the hospital, like the university, like large industries face is recruiting talent. We have to make our community attractive if people want to come here. Now, you may say, well, you should hire local. I'm local. I was hired. It happens. But sometimes, we have to reach out to bring in the talent we need to our community. To attract that talent, there's a competition. And I will tell you, when I look at the track record of my own hiring executive talent into this area, we're losing. Worcester County and Talbot County are whooping us bad. If you like getting whooped, then you know what to do. If you want to win, you're going to have to have, there are three things these executives always tell me they're looking for. They want a vibrant, alive downtown. They want improved schools, and they want a greater housing inventory. Those are the things we need. Thank you.
Thank you. KT?
Hello, my name's KT. I am Sharon's neighbor. I have been here off and on since 1992, and I have been here full-time since 2003. And in that time, I have been desperate to see downtown grow, and nothing is just making it happy. So in the early 2000s, a lot of us artists and entertainers got together, and we created the growing art scene that you see downtown today. We got a bunch of cultural events happening downtown, a bunch of large-scale events, and still, we just can't seem to grow. And if ample parking and a thriving art scene is the key to a thriving downtown, then to echo Jamie Heater's words, why are we not there yet? So I'm in favor of this, because we've tried everything else except for letting people live down here. So will there be parking problems? Yeah. Yeah. The more, the more development we have, we're going to have parking problems. We're a smart city. We'll figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other public comments? All right, the time is now 5:59 PM. The work session is now adjourned, and at the same time, I do call the legislative session to order. The time, it is December 16th still, and this is the legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. At this time, I will entertain a motion for a five-minute recess.
So moved?
Right. Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to return from recess.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Good evening, and welcome to the December 16, 2024 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. If you wish to speak during public comment, please wait until the end of the meeting, complete a form at the table that you came in, and give it to the city clerk. Speakers will have four minutes. Again, if you want to wait till the end of the meeting to grab that form, I would appreciate it. Reminder, this is our last meeting of 2024. Our next meeting will be held on Monday, January 13, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Please silence your cellphones, and at this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in my nation under God, in the midst of poverty and injustice for all.
On tonight's legislative agenda, we have the consent agenda, which will include August 26 session minutes. We have two award of bids, which will be presented by the procurement director, Jennifer Miller, on playground equipment installation and water main supplies, the acceptance of the 2024 audit. We have two public hearings on ordinances numbers, ordinances numbers 2903 and 2904, operation of utility substation, and operation of a daycare center. Ordinance 2905 for second reading, titled Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Spaces. Ordinance number 2906 for second reading, amending sections 15.04, .010 of the building code. First reading of ordinance number 2907, approving a budget amendment to the general fund budget for the Salisbury Fire Department. Ordinance 2908, first reading of the city code for a category of uses permitted in parcel H of Plan Residential District Number 7. Ordinance number 2909, first reading, amending section 17.24, .040, increasing the inherent density permitted in the development of the central business zoning district. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for presentation.
So moved.
Second.
Hello, good evening. We have one item on the consent agenda this evening, the approval of the August 26, 2024 legislative session minutes.
All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. We will invite Ms. Miller up to the podium. And I will entertain a motion to hear and read the award of bids, ITB 25-112 and ITB 25-113.
So moved. Second.
For reading.
Okay, very good. Can you hear me okay?
Thank you.
Okay, sort of. The Department of Procurement hereby seeks award of bid approval from the Salisbury City Council for the solicitations as defined in your packet. The city followed required bidding practices as defined by the Salisbury Charter and the Municipal Code of Ordinances. And when we do, when they are bid by us, we do post those solicitations on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal, Planet Bids, and the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. However, for both of these, these are either cooperative purchases or piggyback purchases, and we'll go into that. So the first item this evening is invitation to bid number ITB 25-112. This is playground installation and equipment. This is for the Department of Field Operations to provide labor, equipment, materials, and incidentals to install new playground equipment at the Doverdale Playground. This is via a cooperative OMNIA contract for playground and outdoor fitness equipment, site accessories, surfacing, and related products and services. The vendor is Compan Incorporated from Austin, Texas. I do have the maturity date of the contract there in your packet. The total cost is $229,931.40 in your packet. I did note to be determined for the GL account number, but that has been determined. The account number is 1050051302674003. There was $240,000 approved in FY25 Budget Ordinance 2870 for FY24 Community Parks and Playground, Playground Equipment Replacement at the Doverdale Park. So the purchasing authority comes from the City of Salisbury Charter, Section SC16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions, which states that competitive bidding is not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstances. That's when we look at contracts in which the city would receive a price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. The City of Charlotte, North Carolina competitively solicited a request for proposal number 269-2017-028 and awarded that contract to Compan Incorporated, and they designated OMNIA Partners as the administrative and marketing conduit for the distribution of the contract to participating public agencies. The City of Salisbury is an OMNIA Partners member, number 4012999. Okay, now, before we go into the next one, I do want to give you a little bit of background information on this one. And on November 3, 2024, the City of Salisbury...
Ms. Miller.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just any questions on the...
Sorry.
Oh, no.
Glad to see that.
Okay.
I'm glad to see it happen.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Yep. Okay, so November 3, 2024, the City of Salisbury posted bid number ITB 25-108. This is the park raw water main replacement. We received six bids on December 4, 2024, but all bids came in over budget. $225,000 of the budgeted funds had to be expended before the end of this fiscal year. So because that project came in over budget, and the city would like to be able to take advantage of the $225,000, we pivoted very quickly. The thought was we would use that $225,000 to purchase what I'm going to bring to you tonight. So this is invitation to bid number 25-113, Water Main Supplies. Just keep in mind, too, even though I'm calling it invitation to bid, for us, that's a tracking number, a contract number. It helps us find and reference documents later. This is for the Department of Water Works. The specifications here are 2,100 linear feet of 24-inch C900 DR18 pipe. We'd like to piggyback on the Prince William County Contract 5061299. This is plumbing supplies, equipment, and maintenance parts. This was awarded to Ferguson Enterprises from Chantilly, Virginia. The contract maturity date there is November 8, 2025. The cost of this pipe is $210,630. The account that I have noted in your packet is fully funded to support that purchase. The purchasing authority here, same one that I referenced before, City of Salisbury Charter, Section SC16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions, which states that competitive bidding is not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstances, which is contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. Now, I want to be transparent with council. For this particular Prince William County contract that we'd like to piggyback on, the award to Ferguson, Ferguson is a supplier of many manufacturers. On their price list, they listed 70 different manufacturers, and I did put that information in your packet, each having a different percentage discount. You'll note line 71 says "everybody else," and there's no discount applied to that. This pipe, my understanding, this pipe isn't made by 20, 30, 40 different vendors. It's a very select pool of manufacturers that manufacture this specific pipe that we need, that the city needs. So it falls into that category of line number 71. There's no additional discounts offered. Me as the procurement director, that did not satisfy me a whole lot for due diligence, because I did not know if the city would be getting any kind of competitive rate for whatever price we will be getting. So we did do due diligence on this. We did get three quotes for the same product from three different suppliers. We got the pricing that is in your packet from Ferguson. We got pricing from another supplier, Core &amp; Maine, and we got pricing from Dover Plumbing Supply. Again, we've done all of this since December 4. So we would like to award this contract, this purchase, to Ferguson in the amount of $210,630. They did, out of all those quotes, offer the lowest price.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, and thank you for providing that extra due diligence for not only the council but for the city as well. And then just one point of correction again in the memo from you to the director. You noted Prince William County, Maryland. I just want to note that it is Prince William County, Virginia, correct?
No, Maryland.
Prince William County?
Oh, Virginia, I'm sorry.
Virginia, okay. I just want to make sure we're...
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Prince George's County, Maryland, but in the memo, it is, in Chantilly, is in Virginia. Perfect. The only question I have is, I know that we're, make sure that we are allocating the funds to, that we don't lose them. So I'm guessing we'll see you again to recover the other... So we're just...
So for which project? For the park raw water main?
For the previous award of bid that we...
We're not gonna... No, no, no. We're not, we don't have the funds to... So of the budgeted funds for the park raw water main, we'll use this $225,000 to buy some of the supplies, not all the supplies that are needed. There'll be stored materials. We are going to revise that bid packet, break it up into smaller sections, rebid the park raw water main. So eventually, I will come back to you for that project, but not at this time. It will be a couple months.
I'm just writing down my notes. Okay. Counsel, any other questions on the above award of bids?
No.
No.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. For the fiscal year 2024 audit, do we have consensus from council to accept the FY2024 audit presentation earlier from the work session?
Yes.
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 All right, we have consensus to accept that 2024 audit. All right, this time, we'll move forward to our public hearings with ordinance numbers 2903 and ordinance 2904. Anyone wishing to speak during either of the public hearings, please stand now and be sworn in by the city clerk. Again, these are referencing, these ordinances are referencing the R5A Residential Zoning District for the Callaway Street Substation and the operation of the daycare center at Philip Morris Drive Night Watch Childcare LLC. Okay. This time, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2903 for second reading.
Second.
Ms. Moshe?
Ordinance number 2903. This is an ordinance permit. It's been before you for first reading, now for tonight for a public hearing and second reading, and it's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the operation of a utility substation on a property located on the southerly side of Callaway Street, map 0104, grid 0012, parcel 2594, block B, lot 1, and the R5A Residential Zoning District as required by section 17.160040B of the Salisbury Municipal Code. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
The public hearing for ordinance number 2903 is now open. Seeing no one wishing to speak, the public hearing is now closed. All those in favor of ordinance number 2903 for second, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2904 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2904. As you mentioned, this is also an ordinance permit, tracking procedurally the same as the one that we just read, 2903. It's been before you for first reading. We're here tonight for a public hearing and second reading, and it is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the operation of a daycare center at 224 Philip Morris Drive in the light business and institutional district by the Night Watch Childcare Center LLC as required by section 1728040B of the Salisbury Municipal Code. This has not had any changes or amendments since first reading.
The public hearing for ordinance number 2904 is now open. Seeing no public comments, the public hearing is now closed. All those in favor of ordinance number 2904, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2905 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2905. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Title 12 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places by eliminating sections 12.04010, 12.04020, and 12.24020, and adding new chapter 12.25 to include all litter violations under one chapter entitled littering, and further amending Title 1 of the Salisbury Code to confirm the penalties imposed for municipal infractions and misdemeanors. This is before you tonight for second reading, and there have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2905, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2906 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2906. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend sections 15.04010, 15.04020, 15.04020, and 15.04020. 15.04010, 15.04020, 15.04030, and 15.04040 of chapter 1504 of the Salisbury Code, Building Code, and to add sections 1504025 and 1504035 to chapter 1504 in order to update and amend the city's standard building codes. This is also before you for second reading, and there have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
All those in favor, ordinance number 2906, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2907 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2907, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2025 General Fund Budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget. Whereas the city has declared a 90 HP Mercury outboard boat motor as surplus, and the motor has been sold at auction. And whereas this motor was operated by the Salisbury Fire Department, and whereas the city has received a total of $1,156.25 from the proceeds generated from the auction sale and place the funds in the city general fund. And whereas the fire department has used for the funds received and requests that funds of $1,156.25 be reallocated to the fire department operating budget for FY 2025. And whereas this budget amendment, as provided, must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of council. Section 1 of ordinance 2907 reads that the City of Salisbury's fiscal year 2025 General Fund Budget, being hereby amended as follows. A, increase the sale of fixed assets account 01000469200 by $1,156.25. And B, increase the Salisbury Fire Department's building account 24035534301 by that same amount, which is $1,156.25.
All those in favor, ordinance number 2907, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2908 for first reading.
So moved.
Ordinance number 2908, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, amending section 17.150.050A7 of the city code to delete the word, quote, "townhouses," end quote, from the category of uses permitted in parcel H of Plan Residential District Number 7, the villages of Idlet Farm, and to increase density to six units per acre. Whereas the ongoing application and administration and enforcement of Title 17 zoning of the city municipal code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to keep the provisions of Title 17 current, to comply with present community standards and values, and to promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city. Whereas mayor and council of the city are authorized by Maryland Code Local Government Article, Section 5-202, to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general law, and public local law, as mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, to preserve peace and order, to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. Whereas mayor and council may amend Title 17 zoning of the city code pursuant to the authority granted in Maryland Code Land Use Article, Section 4-102, subject to the provisions set forth in section 17.228.020. And whereas the uses permitted in parcel H of Plan Residential District Number 7, the villages of Idlet Farm, are limited to only townhouses with a maximum density of 5.5 acres per unit. The inclusion of all residential dwellings as defined in section 1704120 would provide additional, but still substantially similar, use options in the zoning district with a minor increase in the overall density of the parcel. Whereas mayor and council find that the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city be furthered by amending section 17105050A7 of the city code to permit all residential units in the parcel. And whereas pursuant to section 17.228.020 of the city code, any amendment to the Salisbury zoning code requires a recommendation of the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission prior to the passage of an ordinance amending chapter 17.105. And whereas at a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the planning commission in accordance with the provisions of section 17.228.020 of the city code on November 21 of 2024. And whereas at the conclusion of its November 21, 2024 meeting, the planning commission recommended by a vote of seven to zero that amendments to section 17.150.050A7 of the city code be approved by mayor and council. And whereas mayor and council have determined that the amendments to section 17.150.050A of the city code shall be adopted as set forth. Section 1 of ordinance 2908 reads that the section 17.105, I'm sorry, 17.150.050 of the city code entitled Development Standards be amended as follows. And in your packet, you will see that the changes are highlighted by adding bolded and underlined language and deleting the strike-through language. I will call your attention to line 112, which appears to be the first change, and that is striking the word "townhouses" in line 1114, changing density not to exceed, previously it read 5.5, to now 6.0 units per acre. There's all the changes too.
Thank you, Ms. Moshe. All those in favor of ordinance number 2908, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2909 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2909, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, amending section 17.24.040 to increase the inherent density permitted for the development and redevelopment of property located in the Central Business Zoning District. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of chapter 17 zoning of the city code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to keep the provisions of chapter 17 current, to comply with present community standards and values, and to promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city. Whereas mayor and council of the city are authorized by Maryland Code Local Government Article 5-202 to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general law, or public local law, as mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, to preserve peace and order, to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. Whereas mayor and council may amend chapter 17 zoning of the city code pursuant to the authority granted in Maryland Code Land Use Article 4-102, subject to the provisions set forth in 17.228.020 of the city code. And whereas section 17.24.040 of the city code sets forth the development standards of property located in the Central Business District, including the inherent density for property developed for residential purposes. And whereas council finds that amending section 17.24.040 of the city code to change the inherent density permitted for development in the Central Business District will bring nonconforming properties located in the Central Business District in compliance with the development standards set forth in section 17.24.040 to increase impact economic activities and promote private investment within the downtown Salisbury area. And further, the city's longstanding objectives identified in the envisioned Salisbury Master Plan adopted via Resolution Number 2600 for the redevelopment of downtown Salisbury as the epicenter for continued growth of Salisbury. Whereas pursuant to section 17.228.020 of the city code, any amendment to the Salisbury zoning code shall be referred to the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation prior to the passage of an ordinance amending chapter 17 zoning of the code. Whereas at a public hearing on the proposed amendments to section 17.24.040 of the city code set forth herein was held before the planning commission on November 21, 2024 in accordance with the provisions of section 17.228.020 of the city code. And whereas at the November 21, 2024 meeting, the planning commission recommended by a vote of six to one that the amendments to section 17.24.040 of the city code set forth herein be approved by mayor and council. And whereas council has determined that amendments to section 17.24.040 of the city code shall be adopted as set forth herein. Section 1 of ordinance number 2909 reads that section 17.24.040 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Development Standards shall be amended by deleting the crossed out and adding the bolded and underlined language as follows. And so I will direct your attention to the changes. The first change is on line 87 to 2B, changing inherent density shall not exceed from 40 to 80 units per acre. Those are all the changes.
Thank you, Ms. Moshe. All those in favor, ordinance number 2909, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And the chair votes aye. At this time, we'll move on to the public comments portion of the agenda. Speakers will have four minutes to speak.